Good evening and welcome to tonight's Montgomery College MC Votes Forum for Board of Education Candidates. My name is Carolina Galeano, and tonight we are joined by six people running for three different positions on the Board of Education. Voters, we want you to be sure you understand that these six candidates are not all running for the same race. Rather, there are three different races and each one has two different candidates that you will need to choose between. In the race for one at-large position, voters will choose between Sunil Das Gupta and Lynn Harris, who are both running to serve on the Board for the first time. In the District 2 race, voters will choose between current Board of Education member Rebecca Sondrowski and challenger Michael Friar. Lastly, in the District 4 race, voters will choose between Shebra Evans, who is also currently on the Board of Education, and challenger Steve Solomon. The District 2 and District 4 candidates are required to live in these districts in order to have representation from all parts of the county. Remember that you will vote for one candidate in each of these three races, At-Large, District 2, and District 4, regardless of where you live in the county. Tonight, candidates will have each 60 seconds to answer questions unless stated otherwise. If you are watching, please post your question in the comments section. We will periodically post audience questions to the candidates. We have also encouraged the candidates to answer the questions in the comments section following this forum. I will ask that the comments be civil and constructive. First, we will watch a video from Councilmember Nancy Navarro, who served on the Board of Education from 2004 to 2009 about why the Board of Education is so important. Let's watch.
So the Board of Education, it's such an important body because members are responsible for adopting all the policies that guide the school system, all the schools, everything that has to do from deciding about, you know, how many teachers, what kind of programs are found in schools, every single policy. Plus, they are the ones who decide what is the budget request every single year. So it's a very important role, especially because the budget right now, it's almost $3 billion. So half of the county's total budget is assigned to the Board of Education in order to run our school system, which is the largest in Maryland and is the 14th largest in the country. Everyone should be really, really interested in these races. And I think particularly if you are a Montgomery College student, perhaps you graduated from Montgomery County Public Schools, perhaps you have children or you have family member. The most important piece is that, you know, schools are the draw to Montgomery County. So if we have a high-functioning school system, then we know that that is also going to provide stability in our county because that's what draws people into our county. Number two, almost 70% of our school system's student population are children of color. And we know how important it is to address this issue of the academic achievement gap because at the end of the day, this is our workforce, right? And so we need to pay close attention to who sits in those particular positions and makes decisions that really promote eliminating this achievement gap that is so critical and is so pervasive. So there are a number of reasons, as I said, it's about the quality of life in the county. It's about making sure that all our students can achieve in their, you know, own potential and that those opportunities are there. But more importantly, that this academic achievement gap is addressed once and for all. So make sure to vote down ballot for those members of the Board of Education. I think it's very clear and we cannot ignore that systemic racism is something that has been embedded in policy decisions, in legislative decisions, that date back, you know, decades and decades and decades. And so as a matter of fact, where the Board of Education actually conducts its business, Carver was the only high school for Black students when Montgomery County was still segregated. And so this is recent history and we're seeing how that has been perpetuated. So all the disparities that we are right now addressing, you know, I launched an entire year the work to end up with the adoption of the Racial Equity and Social Justice piece of legislation. And our school system, you know, they're working also towards equity. I would love for them to adopt the same policy because we do need to make sure that every decision that is made is seen through that lens, that we look at that data, every single decision. So there is no doubt that the academic disparities, academic achievement disparities, just as we are examining health disparities because of COVID-19, that disproportionately affect Black and Brown communities. All of these disparities have the same root cause, which has been institutionalized racism, systemic racism, that we are still grappling with.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro, for that important video. Now, candidates, you will introduce yourselves, sharing how your background and experience make you qualified to serve on the Board of Education. But remember, you only have 60 seconds, so I will keep my timer ready. Let's start with our At-Large candidates. Let's start with Sunil and then Lynn. Go ahead.
That unmuting is an art. Good evening. My name is Sunil Das Gupta, and I'm running for the At-Large seat on the Board of Education. Thank you to Montgomery College for organizing this forum. I have spent a lot of time on your three campuses recruiting, advising, and in a few days, I will be speaking again at the Montgomery College Humanities Day. So I look forward, those of you who are Montgomery College students and others, please join. I'd love for you to see you there. I'm a first-generation immigrant, a dad of three MCPS students, a PTA leader and a professor at the University of Shady Grove, where interestingly, 90% of my students come from MCPS and MC. So I know a little bit about how Montgomery College works. I know a little bit about how the public schools work, and I know the pathway to, you know, to the University of Shady Grove. I think, Carolina--
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, I will. I want to be mindful of all the candidates. So Lynn Harris, you are next.
Thank you so much, Montgomery College, for hosting this forum. It is so critically important that voters are provided opportunities to do their homework before they cast their ballots because when you're voting in an election, you are hiring elected officials with your votes and you're paying them with your taxes, and you would never hire somebody that you hadn't interviewed. So thank you so much for providing this opportunity. My name is Lynn Harris. I'm running for the At-Large seat on the Board because I've spent 12 years advocating in MCPS with families and students and teachers and staff as a leader of my local PTA, as a leader of the county-wide PTA. I'm also a nurse and a lawyer and a public health expert and a current teacher of medical sciences at Thomas Edison High School of Technology. And I really do think now, more than ever, having a teacher and a public health expert with that background combined, able to step foot out of the classroom and into a seat on the board table is critically important.
Thank you. Let's now hear from our District 2 candidates, starting with Michael.
Should I go ahead and begin?
Yeah.
Lynn's still on the screen. Hi, Michael Friar. I am running for District 2. I actually have only been in Montgomery County for a few years at this point. I began my career as a classroom teacher in the urban setting, taught for about eight years, and then left to become consultant and a social worker with the Child Protective Services while I was in law school. And after law school, I continued doing child protective services work, as well as representing teachers and children in the education setting. I have 30-plus years of experience working and advocating for students, for teachers, for parents on a number of different levels and in a number of different ways. I was in Hartford, Connecticut, which regionalized, and then took a number of different approaches in order to close the achievement gap. So this is an issue that is near and dear to me, and my hope is to sit on the Board of Education and to avoid reinventing the wheel by actually bringing all the success that Connecticut was able to demonstrate and the programs they were able to put in place in order to remarkably close and narrow. I shouldn't say close because no one's closed it yet. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, let's hear from Rebecca Sondrowski.
Hi. Good evening. And thank you too. I too want to thank you for having us today. I'm Rebecca Sondrowski. I'm the proud mother of two children, a son in the Army serving overseas, and a daughter who's currently attending the University of Mississippi. I'm in my second term on the Board of Education, and I serve on the Communication and Stakeholder Engagement Committee, the Policy Management Committee, and I am currently Chair of the Special Populations Committee. Since the time our children started their elementary school years in MCPS, I've been actively involved in school system. In addition to being a mother, I'm a community member and at heart, a woman who believes in fighting for equity and opportunities and then resources for all students. My experience serving in the school and county PTA leadership roles highlighted to me that there were too few opportunities and too many obstacles for our students to access the appropriate programs that would best allow each student to be successful. And I've dedicated myself to trying to make changes to fix those issues and to be a big voice for our students, staff, and families.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to hear from our District 4 candidates, Shebra Evans, and then Steve.
Good evening. Thanks again for sponsoring this event. I am Shebra Evans, as stated. I am running for reelection to the District 4 seat, currently serving my second year as the Board President. Just very proud of the work that we have done here in Montgomery County as I'm running for reelection. I have a huge commitment to equity and excellence. And so although, as you heard earlier, we have not closed achievement gaps, we are working to narrow those gaps. And what I can say for certain is that as I've been on the Board, I've supported programs such as the ACES, Achieving Collegiate Excellence and Success, trying to give our students that, your president, Dr. Pollard said so well, that are at promise and oftentimes do not have the opportunities. So ACES does that, as well as as a current Board member, work with Montgomery College very closely, as well as the University of Shady Grove, to make certain that we're providing a continuum of education for our students and that you all can continue to be lifelong learners. It's very important that we're preparing our students for success and for the future workforce, and that's what I plan to do if elected.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's hear from Steve Solomon.
All right. Thank you, Carolina, and Francine, and Nick, and everyone at Montgomery College for putting this together. It really feels like a TV show, not just a regular Zoom phone call, so I appreciate the efforts put into that. So who am I? I'm a lifelong resident here of Montgomery County. I've spent my career as a radio and podcast host. I've tried to do all I can to help my community. I volunteered for nonprofits, Go Dog Rescues. I appreciate the hard work that all the volunteers have done in this county to make it as good as possible. I'm the son of two immigrants who taught me about hard work, and that I think is something that's very important for elected officials and Board members. And I'm excited to talk to everyone here today about my platform, which you can read more about at votestevesolomon.com and learn more about me there as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. So we're going to get started with a question from one of our students. Let's see what she's asking.
Hi, my name is Delissa, and I'm a general studies major at Montgomery College. As someone who's had to take remedial courses to meet college readiness, I'm asking the candidates, how are you going to ensure that fewer students end up taking remedial courses once they come to college?
I would like to start with answers from our District 2 candidates, starting with Rebecca. Whenever you're ready to start, go ahead, and I'll start the timer.
Great. So thank you for the question. I know that that's an issue for a lot of our students, and it's very unfortunate. You know, we have been working very hard over the last couple of years to put together data-driven systems so that we can identify where every child is excelling and where they are not doing quite as well and need more supports. We have a Performance Matters, our Equity and Accountability model, and those are all things that I'm looking forward to using that data to individualize education for every child to make sure that they are meeting goals and being successful in their academic careers.
Thank you. We'll go to Michael.
So we just looked up Fields Road is where my son is currently attending, and we just looked at the rating, which is an A+. But then if you turn around and look, you'll see that only 50% of the third graders are at reading level. So there's kind of this disparity between, we have an A+ rated school, but 50% of students are not at their grade level. So we need to take a look at the systems actually in place. And is the kind of the cookie cutter, general curriculum we've adopted, the teachers are utilizing, is that meeting the need and goal? And I have a feeling that what we're going to find out is no. We really need to take a look and examine what it is we're doing and what it is we're teaching as we move kids through. And are we giving them a passion for reading? We're teaching them to decode. You can look at a word and you know what it means. But are we teaching you to read and to love to read? Are we teaching you to write and to love to write? Because those are the things that will inspire you personally forward, that will give you the skills you need to not necessarily need remedial. Find a lot of people check out because they're not interested in the classes, and it's not that they're not capable. It's just that the material's not interesting, and by the time they get to college, they're missing some skills.
Thank you. Let's hear from District 4 candidates, starting with Steve, then Shebra.
All right. Michael said it. Yeah, we have kids at third grade level, half of them not reading at that level. So that's a huge problem, and that really is where it begins. If you fall behind early, it's that much harder to catch up. So I think that MCPS is taking steps to do that, to identify the children specifically who are in need of help and give them an extra hand along the way. Also, to expand our special program search, so we're identifying kids rather than waiting for them or their parents to come to us for help, we're identifying the kids themselves who need help. I think that's a great step towards it. So I think MCPS is doing good in building that program. I just think there's more steps to be made, and if elected, I will work on doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Shebra.
Great question. You know, prior, we were looking at schools and how well they were serving our students. And so now with our new model, the Equity Achievement Model, we're looking at individual students. We're asking the questions, are our students learning? Are they learning enough? And if they're not learning, why aren't they learning? And then what are we going to do about it? So we're really trying to drill down to the individual student so that we can make certain that whatever interventions that need to be put in place are put in place for that student so they can have every success to be able to achieve throughout their years in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Let's hear from our At-Large candidates, Lynn and then Sunil.
Thank you so much. This has been a longstanding problem and an issue of longstanding concern to advocates, parents, students, teachers, and family members alike. I think that one of the things that we struggle with is making sure that we are supporting every student where they are. And what we need to be doing is assessing students enough, but not overtesting. We need just enough data so that we can figure out what students need special learning assistance, what students are achieving at grade level, what students are ready for acceleration so that we can support every student where they are. I know as a high school student and the parent of a high school, as a high school teacher and the parent of a high school student, in many ways, our school system doesn't do a great job of preparing our students for what comes next for them when they leave us. We're not holding them accountable to college and career-level standards, and we need to figure out a way to scaffold those expectations gradually throughout our educational system so that by the time our students are juniors and seniors, they are understanding what the expectations are going to be and they are ready to meet and exceed them.
Thank you. And now Sunil.
So let me say that this is unacceptable to me. I see this in my classroom, and I am frankly appalled by the situation. I will also say that if you look carefully at the issue, you will see that there's great variability. It's not that all our students need remedial classes, that some of our students need remedial classes, but there are others that do not, and that variability is the problem. So it's not like we're not doing things right. If we can address the variability somehow, if you look further down at the variability, there are two groups, right, that are striking. One is special education, and the other is ESOL. And if you look at the ESOL, if you look at how we supported ESOL in the last maybe six or seven years, you will see that we've actually cut some funding to ESOL programs, right? So in fact, what I want to do is to rebalance the resources so that we can have a much better, we can have smaller class sizes. We can focus much more on content education, and I think we also need to have solid teacher training. In fact, if you look at virtual learning right now, you will see how important teacher training could have been, right?
Thank you so much. We have a question from our live audience, so I'm going to pose that to all of you, and I'll let you know in what order. But Trans Maryland is interested to know how the candidates intend to support transgender and gender nonconforming students. For instance, will the candidate support adding sexual orientation and gender identity curriculum content for all ages with MCPS? So we will start with Sunil and then Lynn.
Okay. So the first thing I will say is yes to supporting curriculum around gender and supporting curriculum around a whole set of life skills, in fact, if you will, and bullying, you know, anti-bullying, I mean, anti-harassment. So a big part of, you know, a big part of the life of our transgender students is that, you know, they are disproportionately bullied and sometimes disproportionately homeless as well. So we have to find a way to provide the services to make sure that when a student makes a complaint, that we take it seriously and that we just don't blow it away, blow it off. So if you look, in the late summer and spring, there was a tsunami of complaints about sexual harassment and assault on Instagram from MCPS students, and that should never have happened. We should have been able to address those issues much earlier so that we didn't get there. So specifically for transgender students, I think making sure, you know, making sure that they are not bullied and when there are reports that we take actual action is going to be very important. And then there are services. It has to do with homelessness. It'll have to do with name change, all those things.
Thank you. Lynn, go ahead.
Yes, it is absolutely essential that every single student in every single school feels safe and welcome and valued, being exactly who they are every day. And part of that is making sure that our students who are LGBTQ feel like they can be their authentic selves and that their schools and their school spaces are safe spaces for them. Yes, I completely support having fully inclusive curriculum in MCPS and celebrate the partnership initiated from our student advocates that resulted in the creation of the first-ever LGBTQ elective course in the United States, which was to have kicked off this year and is piloting, even though we're virtual. I think we need to continue to partner and listen to students so that we are responsive to what they are telling us their needs are, whether it be, you know, name preference or gender-neutral identifiers.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. We'll go to now District 2, starting with Michael, then Rebecca.
So in the very dark ages of public education, special education students were segregated out, put in a classroom or a different school, and we found is that instead ostracizing them, they were treated differently. We moved away from that. We integrated them into the regular education program. They deserved to be in the regular education program, but one of the subsequent things they found is that that exposure of the average kid to these special education students, they found out they're real people, and a lot of them are worth having as a friend. So you had kids with cerebral palsy, you had kids with learning disabilities, you had kids with Down Syndrome that were suddenly mainstreamed in irregular education programs, and a lot of the issues resolved because no longer were they just unknown in a classroom in the corner. They were the kids sitting next to you. So that exact kind of same approach and attitude really, really works for transgender and gender nonconforming students in that when you get to know them as people, you find out they're people. They have wants and needs and desires, and that's the best thing we can do, is ensure that it is a safe area, that they are not being bullied. But that more importantly, they can be who they are and be comfortable with being who they are because then you find out they're awesome, and they can be a great friend.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Yes, so thank you so much for this great question. For me, this is an easy one because I've already been doing this. I have served as the Chair of the Special Populations Committee, and as Chair, I've worked very closely with the LGBTQ+ community to rework our curriculum at every age level so that it's much more inclusive and every child can see themselves in it. I've supported and advocated for supporting students' name, choice of names, putting together lists in classrooms so that if there's a sub, someone knows how to identify each student by their preference. I supported money funding for unisex bathrooms in all of our new construction of our new building, our new school buildings, and the naming of Bayard Rustin's Elementary School, which, you know, was a very controversial, excellent first step in making sure that people realize and understand and appreciate the importance of respecting every individual.
Thank you. All right. District 4 candidates, Shebra and then Steve.
Sure. As a current Board member, I can associate myself with a lot of my colleagues, Mrs. Sondrowski's comments. But in addition to that, we also have a student information form. So our students, as they're new to our school system, are not having to identify themselves as being either a male or a female, which we know that is very important. We have guidelines for students around gender identity. We have our policy, ACA, is non-discrimination, equity, and cultural proficiency, just stating that we do not tolerate discrimination in any way, shape, or form based on a person's personal characteristics or perceived characteristics. So a very big supporter of the community, as well as our senior leadership. They traveled, I forget the conference, I think it's called Time to Thrive, but they traveled to a conference to be able to know how to better support our students, our LGBTQ+ students, and as well as we have so many partnerships to support our students. We have Gay Sex Alliance programs in all of our schools, so definitely a huge supporter.
Thank you. Yep. We'll go with Steve.
Okay. Ideally, we wouldn't have any need for bullying, for harassment, for sexual assault documentation, but sadly, it all exists, and we've seen instances of this in MCPS. And of course, as Shebra said, there are policies in place to help all students not be bullied for anything that they believe or feel that they are. But sadly, that's the case, and I think we need to reimagine our bullying policies for MCPS. It's not working right if it's still someone who doesn't feel comfortable in our school. So I think that's something we can adjust. And Sunil said too, we need more curriculum about real-life skills, about living your life as who you are, and especially as a child, it's even more difficult. So things that we can teach kids that way, I think, are very important and something I'd support.
Thank you. All right. Now we have another question from one of our students. Let's hear from them.
Hi, my name is Joseph Smithy. I am a second-year student at Montgomery College. I wanted to ask the candidates what they feel are the pros and cons of virtual learning. And once we get back into regular in-person schooling, what do you all hope will continue on from this period of virtual schooling? Thank you.
All right. So we will do this order, District 2 candidates, Rebecca, Michael. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. So it's an important question. I think that our students are feeling incredibly isolated and alienated in a lot of ways. That's definitely been a big challenge with this. But we've worked hard to try and make sure that every student has access to internet and to the technology needed to be able to continue with their classes successfully. I put forward a resolution at the Board, one of our Board meetings a few months ago, asking the Superintendent to examine what we've learned from virtual learning and see how we can use it to incorporate expansion of access and opportunities for every student, regardless of which catchment area their school is in, so that they can have access to every course that's offered. Look at things like floating teachers, so where a teacher would be teaching virtually and the class would be learning online.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael, go ahead.
So I've designed a few virtual programs in my time, including an entire college course, coursework. The pros are that you are actually able to work on your own time, in your own way. So, you know, one of the appeals to a lot of online or virtual learning that a lot of folks found is I work full-time during the day. I can go home and I can complete the work in my own time, in my own way. So it is great for access, great for people who can't attend classes. It's great. There's a lot of positives. The negatives here are quite frankly, our students are overwhelmed by the sheer amount of material and the time. That one great thing about virtual learning is taken away from our kids because they have to be in a place at a certain time, sitting in front of a computer, engaged in a class. And for those of you that don't have kids, a lot of that time is one-on-one discipline and trying to get kids to wake up and pay attention, turn cameras on, everything else. So in a 50-minute class, probably about 20 minutes of education take place and 30 minutes of who's doing what and what's going on. I have to sit over my son while he's in class, just to make sure he's engaged. So it's got its positives, it's got its negatives. But the summer slide is the best thing about it because we can offer courses over the summer to actually engage students and prevent that slide going forward. So that's a wonderful thing that'll come out of this.
Thank you. District Four candidates, Steve, then Shebra.
Well, the pros are, I guess it's a time saver. You don't have to go to and from school. So that's, that's one thing. That's a good thing. And as, as Michael said, there are advantages of virtual learning, perhaps in smaller groups, obviously. But no, no one could imagine you'd teach a class of 28 elementary school kids virtually and it'd be anywhere near successful as an in-person group. So that's the problem, that it's, it's just not feasible to do for certain groups of kids. It might work for some, but it certainly does not work for younger kids, especially elementary school kids who cannot sit in front of a computer. I can't sit in front of a computer all day. I gotta do something else. I'm fidgeting, I'm doing something else. I can't pay attention. So it's certainly not something that elementary school kids can be expected to do all day. And obviously for special education kids who have all sorts of different issues than, than others, it, it's even more of a challenge for them as well.
Thank you. At-large candidates, Lynn, then Sunil.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, Shebra.
So ideally, we would like to be in person. Our students can definitely build those connections and relationships when they are able to see and touch their teachers. But the upside to it is we were able to continue to provide meals to our students who, who rely and depend on it. And, and then in addition to our families who lost their income, we were able to supply food to our families. We gave out 4.1 million meals. We were able to give out technology to every single student. And so prior to the pandemic, we had not been able to do that. So we found a way to be able to do that. And so what I would say is while we, we've heard from many that is working well for, we've heard and we know that there are many students who need to be inside of a school building. And so what I would say is that the good things that have come out of it is that we develop a student wellness team as a result of virtual learning to make certain that those students that are not logging into virtual learning, that we're able to touch base with them, either through their teacher, their counselor, their parent, community coordinator, their principal. So this is all hands on deck. And not that it wasn't before, but is really some intentionality behind it. Because we want to make certain that we're figuring out why people are not connecting and there's some supports, resources that they need that we, that we can provide that to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn, go ahead.
As an M C P S teacher, I can say that the pivot to online learning has been difficult. But as a pro, I would say I have certainly learned new skills. I have certainly learned new technologies. I've certainly learned new ways to deliver instruction that for me is a particularly and uniquely hands-on curriculum. I would say the cons are, we know that for most students, virtual learning is not the best learning environment for them. And for some of our students, there will be irreversible learning loss or irreversible loss of opportunity. And as we move forward, I think we can learn for, what we can take from this experience is, I look, I'm a public health person. I look at every crisis as an opportunity. So I think what we're learning is, as some of the others have spoken to, is we are now learning new ways that perhaps we weren't willing to fully entertain to provide equitable access to students for, to unique programs not available to them where they are. And extended learning opportunities through summer.
Thank you. Sunil.
So first, I have been teaching online for, I think, seven years, perhaps a little bit more maybe. So I have a very good sense of what the difference between what online is, online education is and what face-to-face education is. And the two are not the same, not at all. It's not the same in the way it's delivered. It's not the same in which the learning, the way the learning happens. Even the content is often different. So, but that distinction is often not recognized and certainly our, you know, we, we didn't do all of that. So the first lesson I actually, I draw is that from this experience is how much we need our teachers. And I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers out there and say, you know, thank you for what you have done in this very, very difficult time. And I, and it's been amazing. Imagine if you had real support and how much better this could have been. So that's the first. The second is that while it doesn't work for everybody, it has worked for some kids. So even when we talk about special education kids, right? Some special education kids that have sensory issues have actually, you know, benefited from being away from the distractions of the classroom. So we want to continue some of the offerings that we do now into the future, I think. You know, that was, that was the crux of the question, I believe, from the student that asked it, right? And so we should be able to do that. But also, I think Wi-Fi, right? I think the biggest technology issue right now is Wi-Fi. And the county should go ahead and provide Wi-Fi as we.
Thank you. Thank you, Sunil. Appreciate that answer. We now have another question from our audience watching on YouTube. So the question is, how do you plan to address the disparity between the rates of discipline between Black, African-American students and all other students enrolled in the district? So again, you each have 60 seconds. You've been doing great. And I will, we'll go in this order, Sunil, then Lynn, and then District Two, and then District Four. Go ahead.
First, I would like to, I would like to make sure that we stop the S R O program. That I oppose the S R O program. And I would like to see that the resources that we use currently use for the S R O program in, to support our students, whether through restorative justice, through more counselors, through more mental health workers, social workers and all of that.
And you were talking specifically about that S R O.
So take the resources and put them into that program so that we can be preventive in our, in, you know, in, in what, what happens rather than, you know, retreat the trauma rather than the sort of the, the consequences, right? So that's, I think, the first one. The second is that we really have to look inward and see why is it that we think that you, why we think younger Black children and we treat them as older, right? For example, and especially there was a story in the New York Times recently that said especially about young Black women and how we see them older than they are.
Thank you.
And that, so we have to retrain our staff.
Thank you. Lynn, go ahead.
Yeah, the issue of disproportionate impact of discipline policies on our students of color is one of longstanding. And by definition, that makes those policies racist ones. And so front and center to be addressed with the ongoing anti-racist system-wide audit that M C P S is committed to conducting. But really, the basic thing is we need to make sure that every school has a safe and welcoming school climate and that we have the resources available in every school system to meet each student where they are. So that we are preventing any kind of, you know, what might be perceived as behavioral issues that are really masking trauma. And so we are providing the kinds of services to students and families that allow students to be supported throughout their time with us in ways that help them to be the most effective learner they can and to help them be, to achieve their potential in every aspect of their work as a student. And, you know, as we're doing that, when we do need to discipline, those policies have got to be absolutely blind. They have to be absolutely even in balance. There should be no disproportionality whatsoever in the way incidents are handled in schools.
Thank you. Let's hear from District Two, Michael and Rebecca.
So when I began teaching, I began teaching in Bridgeport, Connecticut, which is one of the poorest cities in the United States. I had a student that came in that actually had not slept the night before because a gang had taken over her apartment building. And she had been under her bed fearing about getting assaulted. When we look at poverty as an issue, one of the things we tend to ignore is the, the impact that has on children, the anger, the angst, the issues that they bring in. So when we have schools that are more than 50% farms rates, what we have is a community of poverty that are bringing those issues into the building. This is one of the reasons why study after study, white paper after white paper said, we cannot have a school building that is higher than 50% of farms, not because farms can't, kids can't learn, but because the issues with the environment and the neighborhoods that they bring in create all kinds of other issues. You have to be specially trained, trying to do this in 60 seconds, it's a very large topic. You have to be trained in order to recognize those issues coming in. And you have to be able to cut a lot of slack to a kid who's dealing with all kinds of things at home. I was a social worker for Child Protective Services. We had to deal with a lot of extreme situations. And those kids in the middle of those incredibly harsh situations had to go to school. And they had discipline problems, not because they're bad kids, not because they're undisciplined kids, but because if you saw the circumstances and issues they were dealing with in their home environments, you would cut them a ton of slack and understand what's going on. And that's the bridge that needs to be crossed. Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Okay, so, yep, great question. I will kind of echo some of the comments that have been made in that, you know, I think the first important step in this is needing to understand our kids and their stories. And there are so many stories out there. We need to make sure that we are training our staff with trauma-informed training, cultural proficiency, proficiency training. We want to make sure that our curriculum represents our students. And, you know, and we've been addressing a lot of these issues with our policies. We need to continue to look at every policy with the eye of all of our students and all of our, our children. We need to, we're doing an anti-racist audit right now, which I think is, you know, I'm extremely supportive of. And we are working with restorative justice, justice practices to try and really get a better opportunity for not just our staff to understand our students, but for them to understand each other and appreciate one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from Shebra, then Steve.
Yes, thank you. So M C P S is really big on restorative practices. We, you know, I believe it's really important to have relationships. And that helps to be able to understand our students and where they're coming from. And we want to be able to educate our students and you could, you could best do that when they're in school. So we're really looking to expand that a lot, a lot more in the elementary school level. But what I want to say is that, you know, it was mentioned that we're doing the anti-racist audit. And that's really important because we want to look to see where we've fallen short, because we obviously have. And then we want to take that information and use it to be able to change our practices, to change our policies and our programs to better meet the needs of our students. We want everybody in the school to feel valued and to know that we care. And that's one of the ways that we can do that. And our equity, our Equity Initiative Unit is working really hard at trying to roll out a very robust training program to add more value, to enhance it. Because although we do have every employee, they do the training for around cultural proficiency every year, we know that we need to go deeper. So I just want to say that there's a huge commitment to make certain that we're doing more work around keeping our students in school and educating them.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Well, I think this is a problem of both policy and resources. Obviously, we have policy that prevents just discipline from not being the same to a white student or a Black student. Obviously, it should be. And with, with that, we have to ask the question, if it is happening, where is it happening? What can we do to prevent it from happening? And why is it happening? And if so, what can we do about it? If, if there is a teacher, an administrator, a principal who is punishing a Black student more harshly than for the same thing a white student has done, that's a problem and something we would have to, to deal with system-wide. So I think that there's, there's solutions to this, obviously. And I don't have the exact answer and I don't think anyone does right now. It's a complex question, obviously. But I, I think it can be handled from obviously a policy and a resources standpoint as well.
Thank you. We will now hear from one of our students who sent in a question.
Hello there. My name is Kyle Mathis. I am one of the N C votes student coordinators here at Montgomery College. I remember watching so many of my peers in high school struggle with mental health issues. And mental health issues are particularly prevalent among those in my generation. And I was just wondering, what would you, whether are you going to do to ensure that students have access to adequate mental health resources in schools?
This time, I'd like to hear first from our District Two and District Four candidates. And we invite our at-large candidates to share your thoughts in the comments. So first, our District Two candidates, Rebecca, what, what have you done to address this issue as a member on the, on the board currently?
So this, mental health issues has been a huge issue, a huge advocacy thing for me. You know, I got involved in advocating to, or in running to be on the Board of Education because my son struggled with a lot of issues when he was in school. I've worked very closely with our students in classes, in, in the student leadership roles to put together peer-to-peer seminars, forums, if you will. We need to make sure that we, we need, we don't have enough resources for enough counselors. That's an obvious thing. I've worked very closely with M C P S, particularly as Chair of Special Populations, to put together this Be Well 365. That, a lot of that stemmed from when we got together with our stu, every year, the board meets with the student leadership groups. And out of ideas from listening to what they said, the superintendent and I worked on starting this mental health wellness program idea that ended up just kind of exploding into this Be Well 365. But the bottom line is, is we need more resources and we need more counselors and we need more supports.
Thank you. Michael, what would you do differently?
So working as a special public defender, a lot of the folks that I got, particularly with the crimes that were committed, there were mental health issues. There was no way around it. And again, working as a, as a social worker for Child Protective Services, we were seeing end result. And what we really, really, really need is early intervention. So we need to really focus on kind of where kids are at the beginning. Because by the time those mental health issues kind of snowball and you get into it, in four, five, six years later, there's not a lot that can be done and they're kind of caught up in the system at that point. So we need more resources, but we need more resources towards, resources towards the younger end or an early intervention. So when someone has an issue, has a problem or begins to develop something, then we can get involved and then we can offer that support and that service. So we absolutely need more resources there. Now, kids are kids and we do have a population that's already kind of at the other end of the spectrum and they need that support service too. They deserve to have an education. They deserve to have a high school diploma and they deserve to do it in the safest possible way. They should not feel like they're alone and they should definitely not feel like, I hate to bring up the subject, but a soldier trying to approach the V A and being told you can wait, you know, two weeks before anyone can see you. No child should ever be refused services that they need, particularly mental health.
Thank you. Shebra, what have you done to address this issue?
Sure. So as a current board member, that's really a big deal. Have continued to support in our budgets, hiring more counselors, more school psychologists. This is the second year that the board has approved the Be Well 365 initiative. And next week will be a week-long mental health awareness week. So I'm really proud that the system is not holding all, that they're doing it virtually. So there will be many opportunities for families and for students to participate, where we will be able to connect everyone to resources. So the Be Well 365 initiative is for not only the students, but for the adults as well. But most importantly, if our students are not well in their mind, body and spirit, they will not be able to be there for their academics. So it's a really big deal for me that we support the mental health of our students. And as it was stated, we've heard from our students time and time again. So we try to make certain as a board with, with us having a student member, a student board member, that we are reflecting what our students are telling us through our policies and our practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, what would you do differently?
Well, when I was in school, as, as where my colleagues were three decades ago, or a little more or less, we had one school counselor and, and we never thought more or less of that. And they were, their, their, their wealth of knowledge had to be an umbrella for every issue. They had to be an expert on bipolar, on eating disorder, on everything. And luckily, we've identified, boy, kids are having problems in schools now that we should put more resources towards it. And I believe M C P S has followed, which other school districts around the country have done, more counselors. We have a, a school psychologist association for M C P S A. So I don't think we had that in the past. So we really have grown. So we really have grown in terms of addressing mental health. Obviously, the things like the Awareness Week that's coming up right now are something we, we never even thought of in the past. And, and with the expansion of issues amongst kids, it's, it's something I think we've done a good job of and will continue to do with MCPS.
Thank you. All right, we have another question from one of our students. Let's watch.
Hello, my name is Esmeralda Montenegro. I'm a returning Montgomery College student as well as an MCPS parent. I know that returning to in-person learning is a complicated issue. And with my daughter being in third grade, I also myself have concerns. What will be your top three priorities on how and when to reopen?
All right. So for this response round, we are, we're going to do a lightning round. So you will each have 30 seconds just to, to share your top three priorities in making this decision. We're going to start with District Four, Chevron, Steve, then District Two, then At-Large. All right. Go ahead.
Sure. So that, first of all, that it's safe to return, that we have the supports in place. We are asking our county council, we've asked the federal level for the CARES Funding Act. We know that it will be more money to bring all of our students back safely and that we have all the resources that we need around technology for not only our students, but our teachers as well. Thank you for that question.
Go ahead, Steve.
Well, first of all, we have to make sure we have parents, students, and teachers willing to go back in, in each school, that the school is capable of safely having the, the students back there as well. And we need to also prioritize which students we are going to try to bring back first. And for mine would be the special education students as well as starting with elementary school students because they are in the most needed of that.
Thank you. Rebecca, go ahead.
So this is a top priority of mine right now. In fact, I don't think we should be focusing on too much else other than this question. We need to get our students back into the buildings as soon as possible. We need it to be safe for our staff and we need to provide the resources to make sure that it is safe. We need to be doing everything we can to be getting our buildings ready right now. But first and foremost, we need to be getting, you know, our youngest and most vulnerable learners and students back into the buildings, our special education students, our ESAL students, as well as our seniors and our juniors who are missing out on the last years of their high school experience.
Thank you so much. Michael?
So around the country, we've had a number of states and even communities and counties who have gone back. They're doing hybrid learning. We have models to follow at this point. Brown University is tracking cases and tracking what's going on. So what we need to do is first of all, identify similar districts that have successfully returned in a hybrid model and find out what it is that they're doing. And then just follow those steps. It's been demonstrated what we need to do. There are success stories of having done it. So it is just a simple matter of replicating what they have done. As with others, special education students have got to get back. They are not getting anything. We're falling further and further behind as well as other needs students. Thank you.
Lynn, go ahead. Then Sunil.
Yeah, echoing what Michael just said, thousands of school systems around the country have already reopened, including 20 of Maryland school systems. So we are behind. I would prioritize, first of all, making sure that MCPS has a solid public health COVID CDC compliant plan and set of guidelines and that every one of our 208 schools has a unique plan that is specific to its school footprint, school population, and school needs. We need to prioritize bringing back our special needs students, our CTE students and our youngest learners. And we need to make sure that we have adequate materials to make sure everybody stays safe.
Thank you. Sunil?
So first of all, safely. Second, I would like to see a census of all students and staff, asking them under what conditions they will return. And that forms the basis of, you know, we need to honor the individual choices of families and that, you know, that have special circumstances. And essentially, right now, we also need an inventory of all our usable classrooms, which we do not have currently. I, basically, my point is plan, 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 plan for the green light that comes from public health. That's what I want to do.
Thank you. One last question from our, one of our MC students.
Hi, my name is Ashley Ann Waldike. I'm an elementary education student at Montgomery College. I hope to become a principal one day. My question to the candidates is, why should I vote for you?
Okay. So let's hear from our at-large candidates, Sunil, then Lynn, followed by District Two and District Four.
The foundations of public education in the county today are shaky. We have underfunded our schools for many, many years, decades even, I would say. We have 50%, of our third graders don't read at grade level. And we have mismanaged many decisions around virtual learning. And now, I believe, also questions about reopening. You should vote for me because I have 20 years of experience in academic, in teaching, and over a decade in academic management. I have taught more than seven years online. I'm a dad of three pair, three students in MCPS, one each in elementary, middle, and high schools. And I know what is involved in, in getting, getting us there. We have to have a more definitive and a more assertive plan. And if I'm elected on the board, I will push the board towards, you know, developing a solid plan to get us out of this.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lynn, go ahead.
After 12 years of substantive advocacy in this school system as a parent and now as a teacher, I know this school system wide and deep. I have partnered with communities and students all across this county on so many issues. And one thing I have learned is that we are missing an enormous opportunity if we are not completely partnering with every group of experts about our system. And that means our students, and that means our families, and that means our teachers and staff on every policymaking initiative and every problem-solving issue. I also know that we have a lot of work to do to become an anti-racist school system. And I am completely committed to doing that work and following the courageous moral compass of our school system, which have been our students over the past several years. And I bring the expertise of a lawyer and a nurse and a public health professional and a MCPS teacher all together and at a time when I think each one of those brings unique value to the board table.
Thank you. Michael, then Rebecca.
I've spent 30 years in education and the role of the board is to represent the community to the school system. It is not as, as a representative mouthpiece for the school system to the community. I've been an advocate, an attorney, and a teacher. So I understand the language. And when we sit down with professionals in the system, I speak the language. I've spoken it for 30 years. But in addition, I also have an MBA in finance. So when it comes to budgeting, I can read bottom lines and I understand where money goes and how it can be moved and how it can be shifted and where it might end up. So what you get in me is a total package that represents the community to the Board of Education and the administration in making sure that what they're giving is a high-quality product, what they're giving is, you know, your, your best dollar, you're getting, you know, your return on your investment and that the kids are taken care of. So you get all three of those with me because, and that 30 years' experience in education.
Thank you. I would like to hear now from Rebecca.
So, thank you. I'm looking at the time. I realize these are closing statements and I appreciate this opportunity. I want to thank you all for putting this together. And, you know, it's hard to get to know somebody in a few, with, you know, such a short amount of time, with a few minutes here and a few minutes there. And there's always so much more that I wanted to say. But for me, the most important thing is that every student receives a positive school experience. And that means different things for different children. It's not just about getting A's and B's. It's about feeling valued and care, engaged, connected with your school. It's about feeling safe, understood, and included. It means having the guidance and encouragement for every child to reach their fullest potential and the access and opportunities to take pathways needed to get them where they want to go. It's our job on the school board to be a voice for students and staff and the community. And I've been that. And I've dedicated myself to fighting for what is needed so that each of our students can be assured that their hopes for the future will be realized. And I look forward to continuing that work as your representative for District Two.
Thank you. Let's hear from Steve, then Chevron.
All right. I like that question. It's from, she said she wants to be a principal, right to the point. Why should I vote for you? So I appreciate that. Well, I, I've lived here my whole life. I'm, I'm running because I want to make our schools a little bit better. I want to make sure that the proper changes are made in the community that I've been a part of my whole life. I feel like I, I'm an honest, hard-working person and that those are qualities, although I lack the educational experience that some of my colleagues do have, I feel those are qualities that benefit any elected official, so something I can bring with me. My platform and policy ideas, I think, are, are, can appeal to people. I want to expand our vocational programs to more schools. I worked as a carpenter early on. I think if we taught more kids skills like that, it would really be beneficial. I want to make sure our schools are all safe and modern. And I want you to check out my website and maybe vote for me on November 3rd. VoteSteveSolomon.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Chevron?
Yes, thank you for that question. You heard me state earlier that I have a huge commitment to equity and excellence in my time on the board. I want to be able to continue that work where we're providing equal access and opportunity for our students that, you know, for lots of, a long period of time, it was very difficult for our students, in particular, students of color, to be able to get into rigorous programs, to be able to be identified as gifted. So I want to be able to continue to do that work. I did not mention earlier, but I have two girls that are in the public school system. Sierra is a ninth grader, Sydney is a senior this year. And so while I'm making decisions on the board, while I have made decisions on the board, it has impacted my kids. So I'm thinking about all that. I'm looking at everything through a lens of a parent. But what I know for certain is I travel across the country to all these conferences. No one's doing it like MCPS. You know, we're not perfect, but we can always do better. And we're doing more. We're doing better. And that progress is continuing. And I want to be able to continue to do that work as your District Four School Board Member. So thank you.
Thank you so much. This concludes our forum. I'd like to thank all the organizations who've sponsored this informative event. Without you, we could not have done this. And if you need any voter information or you want to get involved, don't forget to visit MontgomeryCollege.edu/NCvotes. Thank you and happy voting.